Need one of those auto pens.
Call order. We'll say the pledge. Turn east and say the pledge.
East is this way?
Is that east?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America on nation, under God, in this law, for liberty and justice for all.
Earl Cole.
Member Anderson.
Here.
Vice President Gibson.
Here.
Member Garco.
Here.
Member Smallow.
Here.
President Suedo.
Need a motion for approval of minutes of July the line.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made, second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, pass. Need a motion for payment of bills for July.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made, second.
I'll second.
Second made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Runs in the pro station with fourth for July. Need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made, second.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion passed. Correspondents.
Okay, so we were supposed to have the budget workshop meeting tomorrow, but that's, um, Sender Dalton had to change that date. So, we, uh, rescheduled it for the fifteenth of this month at ten a.m. in this building. I will be sending the legal notices tomorrow morning to the newspaper to advertise it. It is just a budget workshop. It's not an adoption. And then, um, for CCMG, they have not heard work yet. I have not heard anything from anybody. They were supposed to start this week with the ADA ramps. And they are supposed to start on the eleventh to start working on the roads. So, I'm going to reach out to Evan Marsh tomorrow morning to find out what's going on. And that's all I have for correspondence.
Revolutions, ordinance.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five oh seven. This is the first reading of this ordinance. It is an ordinance of the town of New Chicago, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations in the twenty twenty-five budget. Oh, it's, I'm sorry. I dropped it wrong. Um, it's actually supposed to be for parks. And I think I, um, I didn't change the top of it.
It says donations.
Yeah, it's, that's wrong. It's supposed to be for parks. So, um, it is fund twenty-two oh four and forty-four oh three for park other capital outlays. Four hundred series capital outlay. Parks is requesting twenty-seven thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars.
Yes, that's for our building fund. That's funds that are already in there. We just did not receive the money back from county from that last grant. It was after this budget was done. So, we need to get that money appropriated.
And then they are also requesting an additional appropriation for fund twenty-two oh four, park operating fund, which is ten thousand dollars. The total of both of these requests for additional appropriations is thirty-seven thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars. And at this time, this is the first reading. So, upon approval of the first reading, I will change the top of this before the next meeting where we do the second reading.
What are you changing, Timmy?
I didn't change. On the top, it says donations, police equipment fund. And it's supposed to say parks. So, um, you see that? Supposed to be parks, but, yeah. So, I will change that.
Did you have to advertise that?
I already advertised this.
Under parks or police?
Well, it's under parks.
Okay.
It was under, it was advertised under parks.
Okay.
And it was correct in the advertisement.
So, she made a motion to approve it?
I do mean a motion to approve it.
Need a motion as amended to approve. Order twenty twenty-five oh seven.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
So, we do need to set a date and time to do a second reading. Now, I did speak to Joe about that. He said they could wait until the next meeting in September. But if you don't want to wait, um...
I, I'll leave that up to the council's pleasure. If you guys would like to do a, you know, a special meeting just to pass this earlier and then the fund, if now we can't hold out until September meeting.
Is there no reason why we couldn't do it?
Not at this time. We have enough money in our operating fund. Uh, we have enough money in our operating fund currently to cover the, uh, roofings.
Yeah.
Um, it's just more of a, the building fund is more of the important one, really. So, I'll leave, I'll leave that up to the council's pleasure. If you guys fall away until next month, that's fine. We can survive and that. I mean, we're not going to be ready to use building fund money until next month anyway, so...
Do we have to advertise that, Timmy, to have a meeting?
We do have to advertise it.
If you do a special meeting.
Yes.
What's your counsel favor? We want to do it earlier or wait till next month?
My, my thought on it is you can save yourself the advertisement fee and wait until next month.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor for next month? Next month. Revolutions, non department, police.
July month of July, uh, officers drove a total of three hundred citations. Twenty-one was misdemeanor citations. One hundred and twelve was infractions citations. Eighty-seven were ordinances. Ninety-one written warnings. And a hundred and nineteen verbal warnings. We conducted a total of four hundred and thirty seven stops. Twenty-six traffic offenses. We towed ninety vehicles. There's a side note under the toe just for the council. Good to give you an idea of how that went down. Uh, there's also a revenue generation report for the council. We arrested forty-seven people for the month of July. We had twenty-four custody arrests. Twenty-three non custodial arrests, which means they were released from the scene without charges to the prosecutor's office. Of those forty-seven arrests, thirteen were drug-related, fire-related driving, and seven were operating by occupation. Officers have began their required legal updates and state mandated training for twenty twenty-five. On July the twelfth, officers will attend the CPR A D first aid training at six P.M. Uh, I'd like to open this course up to all time New Chicago employees. I feel like you don't have to be a first responder to know some basic life-saving steps. The cost is paid off per person. It's through a certified instructor from the American Heart Association. You will be certified through the American Heart Association. And that course, that class is built to you.
It's not July twelfth.
August twelfth, I'm sorry. I'll talk to them sometime. Officer Urbanite tonight, uh, and Detective Mavir. We did interviews. Today, we interviewed twelve applicants. Twelve, we're going to proceed and we gave additional offers to five, depending on their drug screen. They have to attend the forty-hour pre-basis. Other agencies, they request that they be allowed to attend the pre-basis. They like to do it. So, Gary, Lake Station, Lewis Justin, Stark County Sheriff Department, they all request send some of their officers to our training with their speed speed. We're excited to announce our upcoming back-to-school giveaway on Sunday, August tenth, twenty twenty-five.
July thirtieth, thirty-fifth Avenue.
Okay. Training should be lost. From twelve to four. And it says New Stockton Town Hall on that. That was an early old title. There's going to be a twelve-part, thirty-one oh one hundred street. We're giving away a hundred book bags full of school supplies. We're giving away probably twenty to thirty branded gym shoes. We're giving away free head cuss for boys by licensed barbers. We've got our hot dogs, hamburgers, drinks and snacks. Bounce houses, DJs, prizes, games, and raffles. A special thank you to Tara Pelfrey. Uh, I got the hundred book bags. I had to go out and get all the school supplies while still trying to like control everything else. Tara ordered all the school supplies for me. Uh, had delivery, harassed and they good kids stuffed all the book bags for me. That saved me a lot, a tremendous amount of time. Uh, so far, we received one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars in donations towards this second school event. Uh, we welcome any additional support from the council members. Uh, they help make this a success. Operational concerns. Three of our patrol cars spent the entire month of January in the shop. The same issue they've been in the shop for, for months and months prior. Kind of had some choice words with the shop manager. Kind of had some choice words with the dealership manager. Uh, and they finally got the problem they had figured out. So far, not going to be able to begin over. And you're having to go down. Maybe we get them out to shop here around for a day, then have them make down again. So, you guys seen cars parked in the middle of the parking lot at one twenty-two Haverhill? That's because they died on the road and we had to have them towed in. And that's the best of the tow truck dropping. That's why it's in the middle of the drop. These repeated mechanical failures have caused significant impact for officers and building companies. Thank you, this one's time. There's been an ongoing discussion regarding police overtime specifically in the case of myself. Just to clarify, I don't get overtime. I get straight package per my contract within the day after eighteen hours. We're currently budgeted for five patrol officers in the membership. We currently have three patrol officers in the membership. Much full-time officer works eighty-four hours a pay period. And that's mostly covered by me. We have one open spot. So, out of a twelve-hour day, Monday through Friday, eight little hours are covered by my basic salary. The other four hours, it's just at twenty-six, fifty-something an hour?
Twenty-six forty-four.
Twenty-six forty-four an hour. So, you're basically paying a hundred and four dollars an hour. So, a normal officer working a normal shift will cost the town one thousand, five hundred twelve dollars every two weeks. The town is paying eight hundred and sixty-four dollars when we cover the shift, which means every two weeks the town is saving six hundred and forty-eight dollars until we get that slot filled. But trying to fill it is hard because, again, officers, it's kind of hard to find not only the right off, uh, officer, but the right officer. Don't work for eighteen dollars an hour if they're certified. When they're at a agency that's paying seventy-five thousand a year. Seventeen dollars an hour if they're not certified. They have no health indemnity. They have no retirement pension. They have no paid days, no vacation days, no sick days, no personal days, no comp times, no technical. It makes it very hard to compete with any other agencies that's around us. So, now we continue to receive applications. I go to have to set the field position for five officers who are rightfully department and rightfully entitled. These individuals may be the one interacting with you or your family members for part of your life.
Thank you, Earl. Police Commissioner, no report. Fire, no?
The only thing I have, these, uh, council knows that, uh, we had an engine breakdown just a while back during that, uh, torrential downpour we had. We had a call during that time and the engine went kaput. So, we were able to maybe evacuate the station. We were able to get it back in inside, fortunately, without having towed. Well, I was having a hard time finding a place to take it to. You know, and I don't even get it somewhere, but the tow bill and everything else, what it would cost to have that towed. The one spot was the St. John's. And with the bill that would have cost us would be at least minimum three times the amount that we paid right now. And, uh, we didn't have a tow bill because of this reason. I was looking for a place where somebody, you know, and police chief mentioned to me, said, hey, uh, know this company, you know, they, they work on diesel or whatever. And I said, yeah, man, give them a call, see what, you know, they can do for us. Well, two gentlemen came out to the fire station, said, no problem, we'll take a look. They took a look. They, uh, put it on a machine. They ran it through a machine. They did a diagnostic test, the whole thing. And they traced it all the way down to one little module on, on the board. This other guy had coming over. He said, well, it could be this, it could be that, could be this. I said, I don't want to hear this could be, could be, could be. I want to know what it is so I can get the damn thing fixed. We need this engine in service. That's all we have. So, anyway, um, I asked the guys, I said, could you guys take care of this one? They said, sure, we'll take care of it. All we need is your okay to, uh, get it done. I said, well, you've got my okay, you can get it done. So, it was on Monday, they were able to get the part. You've got to understand also that that engine is two thousand and two. And to find parts for that is crazy. I mean, it, it's a twenty-five-year-old fire truck. The other one's older than that. And the rescue we have is about the same age. The firemen are doing the best they can to keep them up. We, we just did, uh, we just did the, uh, yearly preventive maintenance on both the, uh, or all three of the rigs we have. And when these guys come back with the part, they come back Monday morning and they were there for a couple hours putting everything where we're supposed to be. And they said, well, we're ready, ready to see what happens. And then crank it up, let's hope for the best. Cranked it up, damn thing ran like a top. So, I very appreciate them. And I want to thank Earl here, police chief, New Chicago, for his assistance in finding a company that did the rig, got it fixed, and did it at a very, very, very reasonable price. That company saved the town a lot of money getting that fire truck back on the road. So, uh, Earl, I want to thank you and, uh, thank you for your help in, uh, getting this done. You know, I already tore my hair out because I, you know, experienced it.
What was the name of the company?
It was through CSA, uh, CSA Towing. I have a mechanic that's buying parts of his life. He, he does all the work. He does a lot of duty work. I knew he did a lot of work for CSA Towing. And he was doing a ton of, selling a lot of his tow trucks and everything. And things that other mechanics couldn't get running, he got running.
I'll tell you what, he, uh, he looked at it. And it went like this. And he looked and he listened. He put it on his little machine, whatever. He said, now, he looked here, looked here. Right there is the problem, right here. He said, I got to get this part. He said, you should be fine. I was, I was happy that I don't look. So, um, anyway, we, we lost, we lost three firemen. Not, uh, they didn't die or anything. They, uh, retired. Yeah, well, let's say retired. Yeah, that's good. So, uh, I have two, two more firemen that, uh, are putting, putting out, in applications. They'll be putting applications in Sunday. I also have a couple more in mind. It's, uh, they're career firefighters, but they, they don't mean they want to help me out and help the town out, you know, if, if needed. So, uh, I'm going to talk to all of them, uh, Sunday. See what we can do to keep, keep our manpower up a little bit. Like I told you before, recruitment, retention of volunteer fire departments is ridiculous. You know, it's, volunteerism is about out the window now, so it's crazy. Volunteer fire departments are falling by the wayside everywhere you look. So, it's tough keeping it going, but we're going, we're going okay. But, once again, thank you, Earl, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Earl, for your help. Town manager.
Where do I start? First thing, food bank's going to be coming, I think it's Friday, the twenty-fourth. So, I need all the help I need yet, so, um, we're short one girl in the office again, so, is that Friday?
Yeah, twenty-second is Friday.
That's when it is. I don't know why it's called January twenty-second. I mean, twenty-fourth, twenty-second. That's Friday.
Eleven?
Yeah, eleven o'clock, same time. Yeah, the public works building, four hundred Lincoln. So, I don't know. Brendan and Roxanne may have to, um, do your thing. So, I don't know if I can get away because of the shortness in the office. So, anyway, and then the rest of you guys know what to do, so... Everybody got their letter from Hope. So, on Friday, we have a meeting. Joe, Earl, me, and Brad set out to talk to an ambulance service to see what they'll do. Cheryl gave me... Okay, okay.
I just want to say one thing. I, I, first of all, I don't appreciate how, how we were treated over. And I damn sure don't appreciate how I was treated in Lake State, Brad. And, uh, you know, we tried to be professional as we can, but we, we get all this him, I stuff and, and, you know, well, it costs us this and it costs us that. And then if we take one of your people that I have filled, it costs us that. It does not. It's, man, you're sitting there lying right to my face. You know, I don't appreciate it, but, uh, we're working on it. We're going to, we're going to get something done here. Just give us a little time. Got four months, so... I understand that. Anyway, uh, we're, we're, we're working on it and it's, it's, this has been extremely difficult situation.
I think that's all I have under town manager.
Park Board.
All right, for Park Board, uh, I'm going to try and remember this all off the top of my head because my phone's over there keeping the internet running. Um, we had our first board meeting last night. We are still planning to do the town-wide garage sale September sixth. We're going to be opening up sign-ups for that here shortly. Um, and I'll, I'll put information up at the town hall for that, all the details. Uh, we are also going to still have spaces available at the park in case there's vendors and stuff that want to be able to set up for that. It'll be nine, nine a.m. to three P.M. officially. You know, people can run their yard sales however late they want. You know, it's just the official town-wide part will be nine to three. Um, the, oh, you're, God, thank you.
Goddess.
Goddess. Lunch and learn is wrapped up for the season. Uh, what do we end up averaging per day?
Thirty plus.
Thirty plus per day?
I don't have the final figures from them yet, but we were doing like thirty-two the last time I asked.
Yeah, so, you know, fed a lot of kids this summer. Um, so hopefully, hopefully something changes and we'll be funding for that in the future where we can keep doing it with the forest. The kids love it. The, the people come out and do the, you know, activities with the kids love it, so... Um, walking paths, we are still, uh, looking to do a walking path through the wooded area. Uh, I'm going to be getting a whole cert, of a surveyor to try and find out exactly where our land is back there. And we're also going to be working with Shirley Heinz, uh, to help with wetland delineation. Uh, they can also be, may also be able to help provide volunteers for clearing out some of the old, you know, debris and stuff from in there and helping us get that set up and even possibly a grant to help pay for certain things, so... Um, planting of the trees, we got all the trees planted at the park. Uh, we ended up renting a, uh, auger which made things a lot easier. Um, so we got all those in. We did have a meet, uh, Morgan met with NERC.
NERC, the community people. They, they checked out the trees on the parkway, which need water. Um, that shouldn't be on the parks, I don't think.
No, no. I don't take care of the green meters right now.
Yeah, well...
I have them watered out. Earl, Earl, what are you doing with your fire trucks? It's got water in it now.
Yeah, they're concerned about being audited by the federal government. So, that's why they're putting pressure on the situation. Um, because if they are, then they won't have, they won't be able to do the program anymore. So, they were happy with everything at the park and like the layout and the planting effort that the forest has put in. So, and we'll get it watered. Cool.
Uh, we do have everything for the internet service now. Tony and I are planning on possibly this weekend meeting up to get that set up. Um, with that internet service being set up, we will be able to remotely view our security cameras there. Um, and there's something I, I think I've mentioned to you guys before also, the security cameras. I want to see if we can give access to the police, if the police would want access to those cameras also. Okay, yeah, we'll talk about it. Um, community block development grant. As you guys know, we're moving forward with that. That's what we need the building fund money approved for. Um, we're still looking at doing a, uh, ADA water fountain and a bunch of different sensory equipment, uh, along the walking path there by the bathrooms. Uh, new roof on the garage. We did put the downtime on the new roof. Uh, I'm still, I need to get ahold of LMO and see when we're going to be on their schedule to get that replaced. And then finally, uh, we're looking at doing some, uh, we got some of the old barrels that we're going to clean up that used to be the garbage cans in the park. Um, we're going to clean those up and make planners out of those. And, uh, also on the basketball court, uh, John Spires is going to be helping us out with, uh, repairing some of the fencing.
We got that done with Spires.
Oh, okay, that's done, never mind. He did help us, so...
Any belt somewhere. They got as far as they could. And we also cleaned the small pavilion, the power wash head.
And that is all I have.
Thank you. Plan Commission.
No report really. I mean, reschedule for next month, I guess.
Thank you. Sue.
Repair check-in made to the pump station, so it is working, but it's on one pump. So, Mickey Anderson has ordered the parts in order to get the second pump running. Um, we don't want another mess like we had that night at midnight, so I'm glad to be out there at midnight. So, anyway, it is running. Everything's good right now. Um, waiting on Mickey to get the parts in and then he'll repair the second pump.
Streets.
Meeting starts hopefully Monday, so they're supposed to, um, do the ADA curbs earlier if they could, but I haven't seen them up there. Have you, Earl, seen anybody else on the meeting?
Nope, I'm with your marketing.
Okay, so, they said Monday and then school starts Wednesday. So, hopefully, they're going to, I, they were going to contact tree jack and ask, tell them what their route was with Black Company. Make them move their buses around or whatever, so...
Sanitation.
Um, the contract will be coming out, so Timmy needs a hole above that shoulder. And then we'll kind of get Ben and see what they're going to do, so...
So, it's up this year?
Yes, yeah, it is.
Water.
Was in our main break on six today. That was, uh, oh, that was Indiana Americans, so, um, everything's going so good. I have not heard from Pittsburgh Inc. They were supposed to set up some kind of, um, meeting to come out and inspect their water power, but I haven't heard from them yet. Um, Sender did send me over analytical policy if we need to increase our rates because the Indiana American went up again. Um, I'm trying to hold off right now. Um, we're still making a profit, so I don't want to gouge anybody. But we'll see in the next two, three months how it's coming in. If it looks like we're starting to lose money, we're going to have to do a way to increase, so...
Stormwater.
Don't know anything about it. Robert's in charge of that, so...
Old business.
Um, don't forget the ball.
Um, don't forget the ball game, the fourteenth. Roadhead, Rick and Riley's putting it on, it's free. So, everybody has a letter in their box or whatever, so, family and friends, so.
In new business? Legal reports?
At the request of the chief, I wrote, uh, two ordinances, one prohibiting the operation of a motor vehicle, where the driver license is suspended. So now we can write, write those tickets as an or- town ordinance violation is supposed to state a fraction. So there's money, and the same, uh, with the, uh, ordinance prohibiting motor vehicles with expired registration plates. So that we can collect that as a tor- town ordinance violation rather than, uh, giving it to the state of Indiana.
The state charges, I think, two hundred and sixty dollars, about that, for those citations, and reject your house. Where, as a local ordinance, it's ninety-two fifty.
And then if they don't pay, then we can put a lien on the property after so much time?
We suspend it.
Well, the moving violation, I can suspend the, uh, plates, I don't think I can suspend.
It's still a moving violation.
The, still the expired plates?
Yes, cause it's on the car.
All right.
Well, I got a couple cars that might be used. So, so they need to do a motion?
Uh, no, cause I need to make a change and we need to advertise this, cause we're gonna put a fine on that, so. Unfortunately, the way the police do things, people can't pay the clerk treasurer. Because everything they do has to go straight into spillman, which triggers the county's cut.
I got a question. We can, can't, since it's an ordinance, can we make this straight fine without the court?
Well, that's, yeah, and see, that's the way I wrote that thing, because there is a provision, but how are we gonna, if we can't, if they don't pay it? Then we turn it over to the court, is that, that's what is not happening, or not been happening so far.
That's still a meeting next week, cause what happened last year is they have to order ticket books and rent tickets, so we can do it that way. No, actually, we can still do it with ECWS, I put a call in there where you can actually, instead of clicking, uh, court, like local ordinance court four, I put one in there that says town clerk, the brother heart. The problem would be getting with Tammy, uh, setting up a spreadsheet for her and Mary, turn the tickets in, how much time you're gonna give them to pay it. And then figuring out afterwards how to get it submitted to the courts.
Yeah, because, then, I mean.
So it's probably, yeah.
You know, and we could do the same with all the dog bites and the, uh, trash and garbage, and then turn it over to the courts if they don't pay.
That's me, because then we might, uh, look at some fun and see if we can hire a part-time clerk to do that, a couple days a month. Specifically handle ordinance ticket, and then pay her out of the, pay her help out of that ordinance.
Well, we can talk, look, look at it, I'd have to look it up to see if that's okay, but I think you can.
But what system are you gonna use?
If we go to that, we have to go.
Mary's computer? Police computer?
As far as what? You just need to keep it on the spreadsheet, you know, you put it on a spreadsheet.
So if they knew it, are it a cell spreadsheet, you could be saying to the server, which all the computers should have access this year.
But we love you share. We need, but that would be upgraded technology, everybody need Google Docs, so we can have Google Calendar and everything else, where you can share information.
We have that on our.
Yeah, Google.
We have, I don't know, we have Chief right, and then share that? What I'm saying, we don't want everybody handling local ordinances, we want Tammy or Mary handling that.
Tammy, Tammy can't handle it, she's too busy, and Mary can't handle it. Lord and I figured. Yeah. It's gonna take a lot of computer work, because if not, then people would begin to cry and not pay it because they're not getting notified or they're not following up on it.
Yeah, we gotta make sure that we get them so that they know if we turn it over to the courts, it's gonna add a hundred and forty dollars to the ticket. So they can pay it here, that's why I said twenty days, you pay it here, and twenty days you don't pay it, we send it to the courts.
Can you put that?
That's what I put in the ordinance so far.
Can you put it in there if it don't pay, if it goes?
Yeah, it. It, it's, it's already.
I like that, let me just figure out the logistics of it, how we get that set up on the computer and the notification. I possibly gave. Where are you finding here?
No, I just. I, I know, but I'll, I'll take that word. No, I just wanted to hear.
So, um, let me just figure out how we would, you and I, I connect to your office and we'll sit down and break down, and once the ticket come in, the officer turn it in, how we send an official notification out, cause that's your ticket, it's just received, you just have to send out the actual notification of the fine, how much, twenty days, pay it by this date. If you don't pay it by this day, I would be given a grace period with an additional fee, or then the automatic go to the court. So, you and I, we're, we're figuring that out.
I've got it written, the, you know, twenty days now after.
After twenty days, it goes to the court?
Yeah, that's the way I wrote it, but that's, we can change that too.
So how would we change the ticket at that point?
Well, you have to file it with the. Well, I. Amy's gonna do more. She was wanting, and I don't know if she did, uh, nobody's giving me a copy of the call for next Thursday, so. So we can get letters to them. Did anybody bring that?
Did she call Mary?
I don't know who she called. The list of all the people set for hearing on next.
I thought she said Amy came and picked it up.
Huh?
I thought she said Amy came and picked it up on Friday.
I don't think so.
I'll take it.
Now she's gotta contact all those people and go through them, and everybody pays on the day of court, it's gonna pay. It just drives you nuts. So we don't know whether they, you know, to continue it or to take their license or not, and you take their license, you find out they just paid. It's frustrating, to say the least.
One, that's first of all, I talked to Judge Contreras. And she stated that if we wanted to transfer from Hammond back to Lake County, she's the chief judge now, I was at the top of the right, I don't matter here requesting it. But I didn't know if you wanted to, because I know we have a good relationship with that judge out there.
I like both of the judges, so I don't really have, I mean, Crown Point's nicer for me because I'm there. Uh, it's in my backyard, more or less, uh, but.
It saves us a lot of time, like, when Dickerson's coming to, he's leaving work in Lakefield, he's coming from Hучfield, along with Hammond, or I'm driving from here.
I mean, I would like it as being a lot more convenient for me, that, that's. The judge I like, all judges are nice people.
I recommend.
So, yeah, whatever she wants to do. That's it for legal, I'm sorry.
Announcements?
I don't like that. We're gonna hit the town pretty hard come the, end of August, as far as, uh, where it's just, uh, trash, grass, vehicles parked the wrong way, all of the stuff, making the town look very weird, people down there. Prior to that, uh, the council favored it, I wanted to pay for Alito from two of the huge dumpsters. And have them put in the parking lot at one twenty-two, and only allow it, we tell the traffic, the only thing that wanted to go eight hours, and we set an officer there, so the only people that can dump in those dumpsters are those who show ID with a new Chicago address on it. That would give people a chance to clean out all their trash and junk and get their stuff together and throw these stuff back in the trash.
You have one?
Down anything, we don't pay for that at Alito.
You have one dumpster there for eight hours, one day?
Two.
Two days, eight hours?
For eight hours.
I did want to clarify one thing, if you're gonna issue all these tickets, um, on these tickets, you can ticket not just the occupier of the premises. The landlord as well. And that's according to our ordinances. So, issue two, if it's a rental situation, is I can put a lien on the landlord's house, the tenant goes away, they, they don't care. But, uh, the landlord will care.
Well, the council favored, he's part purchasing a couple of dumpsters, I know before you guys had some issues with dumpster, everyone in South Chicago regulars dump them.
Right, and what they did, they go to the family house in Lake Stacey and hope they bring their junk and then dump it. So we went, the two dumpsters, three that we get for free, we do get three free dumpsters a year, we end up having ten. So Earl, let us call, um, Ben tomorrow or whatever and see if they're showing type of three free dumpsters, then you don't have to wait for anything.
So if you get three, would that be three days early or you just only do two days?
We'll do it one day, I'm gonna have a reserve come in, have them park at the dumpsters for that eight hours, so that we know who's dumping in there, we don't want Lake Stacey to hold. They're gonna actually check ID before they're allowing them to dump, so it'll be a system, you come in, offer humor, and you leave back out and do the outing. That would be know who's dumping, if all the young people are dumping, and they can't say we didn't do a town cleanup and we just ran tickets.
So you're gonna do it two days or three, she said they maybe three dumpsters.
One dumpster, three days, I mean, three dumpsters one day.
But then we have to get that out on the bills, or Joe website.
I can put it on the website, reach one other.
Put it on the site, on the sign, like Michigan.
So October, are you talking?
No, I'm talking the next couple weeks.
Maybe June next month.
One other thing to keep in mind, Earl.
Well, let me call.
Is, uh, I know you're planning on having an officer there for eight hours, make sure that people can come back and pick those up.
Pick those up, yeah.
Eight hours, yeah, because if they can't, they're gonna want somebody there the whole night.
Yeah, cause they'll be dropping off everybody's mattress and their houses and their box frames.
Yeah, that's why I gotta.
Tires and refrigerators.
Be dropping off that morning, at six in the morning, they can come pick it up at six two. But we can do six, we just want to.
Let's do that for the permit stuff, we have lots of stuff.
Because people will have time to accumulate.
That'll give us time on that.
And if they don't sell it, then they know they want to get rid of it, then they know that the following week they can haul it over to town.
So after September sixth?
Yes.
Yeah, that might, so we can get, yeah, and we can put it on the bill, maybe?
Well, you guys wanna look at maybe?
Well, the in-town ones has already gone out this month, so it'll be next month, and I usually tell them like two months in a row, if they don't read their bills.
Or maybe September twentieth?
It'll be the day, yes.
That'd be Saturday after, uh, Saturday after.
Those are sales on the sixth to the thirteenth.
On the sixth to the fifteenth.
Can we make a date to be determined? Will vote all, all in favor of letting Earl have the dumpsters, say aye?
Well, yeah, we'll find, I mean, we'll, we'll check it out.
All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Curried.
So Sue's gonna contact Total?
Yeah, I'll call them tomorrow.
And just make sure that they can pick them up that night, because it's not, you know, that was dumping.
When we were gonna knock down the building, they were giving me six dumpsters, okay, but we haven't got any, so I know I got three for sure, so.
Yeah.
It won't cost you anything though, so that's in our contract.
And, and you know, even the council can come out and help, you know. I mean, they can't say that we just, we didn't try and help.
Forty yards or whatever they.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
The wall rush.
Yeah, it's forty yards, but they maybe sixty, I don't know.
So it's a one, one day town cleanup?
Say twelve hours?
Twelve hours, from six A to six P. So, it makes, it makes it easy, you work four hours, so, they got twelve hours to get out there.
So those people calling now, I didn't say we don't do town cleanup, I can tell them now we're gonna do one.
Well.
Any hour business to come to the board of council? Open forum?
I do have one thing for open forum real quick. Tammy, I know you said you're gonna get ahold of Evan Marsh about when they're gonna start paving and doing that, can you have them email me their schedule? That way I can put it out on Reach Alert and the town website. Just have them send it to my parks account?
Okay. It'll probably be on milestone though, right?
Evan, well, who's inspecting it? Evan Marsh?
No, yeah, Evan Marsh.
Yeah, Evan Marsh should have their schedule then.
I think they gave it to us, didn't they, at the meeting, Jim?
At the pre-construction meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't bring it.
Yeah, they should have given you a schedule in street time.
Yeah, it's probably fine.
Uh, so, I have one thing too. So last week, a representative from WorldPay came in and installed the software to accept the credit card payments. And then we worked with a representative from Slim CD, which is a third-party company that will be, um, accepting the payments and then depositing those payments into the new bank account, there is one bank account that was open only, and this council approved this, only for credit card payments, debit card payments, and online payments. Then, the girls, the ladies that were working in the office, were able to come back, they were able to see how to print the report out for the credit card, debit card, and online payments, they will go line by line to see who paid. They will be able to do a breakdown off of there to see how much goes into water, MS4, sewer, sanitation. And then I'm hoping to have a go-live date after I get back from my conference.
You have to break it down, you need to do the breakdown.
Right, and I have to be able to pull, I'm gonna pull the money out, so say somebody paid fifty-two dollars, went into water. I'll be able to pull, transfer that from the account that the credit card payment went into, to the water account. I can do a transfer, I will have a receipt, so it will show the deposit. So it's moving along, I'm excited. Uh, I did make a social media post about it after Joe posted, you know, something, I decided to go ahead and let the residents and customers know, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback for it.
I think so.
So I'm hoping that everything, I, I think it will go smoothly.
And one, once it does go live, there will be a button on the homepage of the town website, and one on the water department page of the town website.
Right, so the next step that I have to do now is log back into Slim CD, request that they deposit all of those payments into that account. And then Joe can come in and he can, uh, get on their, on the phone with the man that helped him. Our, it looks really nice, the online form looks really nice, they did a very nice job on it. We're also hoping to have one created to accept contractors' license payments, business license payments, rental applications. However, those licenses and receipts will have to still be mailed. So I will make sure that anybody that pays online for any of those understands that they have to wait for that to come in the mail. But as long as they have their contractor's license or business license, you know, they'll be good to go.
Thank you.
As long as they've paid, um, and then also, we were thinking about doing, uh, one for parks, to make it easier for people to be able to reserve, parks, to reserve the shelter. So I, I think that it'll be a great asset benefit for our town.
I think so too.
And I'm really hoping that it just goes very smooth.
Okay, New Chicago, too.
I know, but I'm gonna do my fingers crossed. Thank you for doing it.
It'll be, it'll be fine.
So, yeah, so I will let everybody know when we have the go-live date. I returned from my conference, well, I'll be driving home from French Cliff on Thursday. So I won't be up to work until Friday, so I'm guessing maybe that following Monday, I'm hoping.
Thank you. Comment from board members? Thank you. Comment from board members?
I, I do have a comment. I, I'd really like to thank Morgan and Tony for all the work they do for the, um, free lunches. I mean, they do more than just, they go way beyond. I mean, Morgan fixes shoes for the kids and, and has, wipes their runny noses and gives Band-Aids and hugs. And I mean, you know, Tony sets up, the one day they have water slides, you know, the sprinklers. The kids do enjoy it. I know on the last day, I was there the last day, and all the kids were hugging Morgan, saying, "We're gonna miss you, we're gonna miss you, thank you." So, they do an excellent job, and let's just hope there'll be funding for it next year.
Well, we thank you for your contribution, and Joe is there almost every day too, with Joe, yeah. It's a team effort.
Yes, it's good for the kids.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Give me a second.
I'll second.